All right. All right, good evening, welcome to the Manchester Town Council meeting October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. First order of business, one, thank you for everybody for working with us tonight. It's our second meeting back in person. We're doing our best to to hold these meetings in an efficient manner and an effective manner so we can get everything done we have to get done, but keep everybody safe as well. First order of business, we do have a public hearing tonight, proposed Lippi Annexation Resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty, so entertain a motion to close the general business meeting and open a public hearing on the Lippi Annexation.
I make a motion? I make a motion, we close the general meeting and open a public hearing?
Motion second, let's say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in a public hearing. Just to maintain some kind of order, I know that we do have some folks here from the from the community, and we're gonna let you speak. I did want to at least double check here, trying to, hopefully they can hear us, double check and see if we have any state or county representatives that are present tonight that would like to speak. Hearing done, we'll call on the developer petitioner and see if they wish to speak first and/or make a presentation. If you don't mind coming up, introducing yourself.
Thank you, Marty Hackett with CLSI, four thirty-nine East Main Street. We're the engineer and surveyor for the project, handling the annexation at this time. Would like to say that, just a little recap of the project, I won't be long. The Lippi Farm originally comprised of approximately one hundred and three acres. The Hill family donated the property on the east side of Maryland Route Thirty to the Carroll County Commissioners for the Manchester Valley High School. The project, the west side consists of approximately eight and a half acres that is already within the town of Manchester and currently zoned R fifteen thousand. Seventeen acres is currently zoned R ten thousand, one and a half acres is currently zoned C two, and the remainder is zoned conservation. It's in the county's jurisdiction at this time. The portion exists in the town already could yield approximately sixteen units, and a portion that's in the county could yield approximately thirteen to fourteen units as it exists today. Over the years, we met with the Planning Commission a few times to discuss development options, and are intent to develop the property in combination with the Old Town subdivision that has forty lots that were recorded back in the late seventies but never constructed. With current environmental regulations, we believe that property would yield approximately twenty-two lots, and we believe with good planning practices, and we would design and plan these properties at the same time. In two thousand and eighteen, the town placed the property into the growth area in the master plan, which allows the property to be eligible for annexation. The master plan shows the property in the priority service area for water and sewer. The master plan states that any property or project will be tested for adequate facilities prior to any plots being approved or recorded, and that's sometime else in the process as we go through the subdivision process that actually falls under the Planning Commission at that time. The master plan states also that the town requests the S H A to conduct a traffic study to determine alignments and improvements to Southwest Avenue, which affects that alignment that comes through the Lippi Farm out to Maryland Route Thirty. So, you know, this project is at the infant stage. We can certainly develop it in the county and the town. But with it being annexed into the town, gives the complete control over the town. And that's what we're here for, to request, obviously, for a favorable annexation decision. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for allowing us to rehearse tonight. My name is Bradford Webb. I'm counsel for the petitioner Woodhaven, three oh five West Chesapeake Avenue, Street one zero five Towson, Maryland three three, two one two zero four. Let's speak briefly about the process, because there has been a lot of annexations, and there's been some confusion that we have experienced in getting to where we are here today. So we're gonna talk about what we're asking you to do now, what you will be voting on at the next meeting, and what you're not doing now, so we're clear about that. This is the annexation phase of the ultimate development of this property. The petitioner filed his petition at the invitation of the town, because the town and the petitioner both saw that it made much more sense to develop the three pieces together at one time. It doesn't make a lot of sense to end up with on the back part, town property, in the middle, county property, and then the old town property, which is in the town. You'd end up, for example, with a county road, a town road turning into a county road, turning back into a town road scenario. And this is just the annexation. And this property is an enclave. Enclaves are bad public policy. They're so bad, and Ms. McCarron will confirm, that if this annexation, any annexation, were to create an enclave, you would not be permitted by law to do it. So it makes sense that when you're presented with the opportunity to eliminate an enclave, that's good public policy, to eliminate that which is already bad public policy. And that's part of why we're here today, because again, it just makes sense. Now, what are we not doing at this part of the process? We're not deciding on the development. You're not gonna be approving the development plan, you're not approving the site plan. All the issues that are associated with those are still to be resolved at the proper time and place when a site plan is presented. I can turn your attention to paragraph five of the annexation agreement, which clearly states that the future development of this property is subject to all of the town's ordinances. But again, that's only if all of it is in the town. The twenty-five point eight acres we're talking about here today will not be subject to the town's ordinances if the annexation is not approved next week or next month. Do you have any questions for us?
I do not at this point. Does anybody on the council or staff have any questions for the petitioners?
I do not.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else from the petitioners? Okay. We'll then move into public comment. So I have three here, and I believe Mr. Miller's gonna screen and bring in some other folks. I'll call them up in the order that I have them. Similar to what you've seen, please step to the microphone. If you're able to keep your mask on, please do so. And then Chief here is gonna keep time. We ask you, let me your comments to two minutes. Of course, we won't cut your mic off like a presidential debate, maybe should, but... So we're glad you're here, and we do wanna hear what you have to say, so... Okay, after you're done, and then we'll repeat this, so those number two and three here, bear with us. If you can please exit this way, and that way, we're limiting folks kinda going side by side on each other. Well, are they coming in this way or this way? If they're gonna come in this way, we're gonna ask them to exit this way. Okay. Okay. First up, Cynthia Jackson.
Cynthia Jackson. Shorter, maybe. Cynthia Jackson. I live on Arizona Way in Manchester. I'm in the Manchester Farms Facebook page, and I've seen what people have written, and my questions are basically their questions. Not so long ago, we were told we couldn't use water for our lawns and our cars, and now you're suggesting that we add population to an area where we had that constraint not so long ago. So that's my first question is, is this going to affect the people who are already here and using the public facilities? My other question is, years ago, I lived in Montgomery County, and Montgomery County, of course, has expanded over the years, and expanded, and then expanded. So I've seen what happens when you continually expand, and you don't have the infrastructure to support that. So that's my other concern, is the infrastructure. Will it be expanded? Will we end up with strip malls like Montgomery County, Relicity City? I realize that's premature at this point, but I think it's something to consider with your planning people. That's my comments.
Okay, thanks. I don't know that we're... I can try to give you a really quick, brief answer. That's unofficial for sure. The water restriction and water usage is unrelated to the amount of units. It's rather related to the level of water in the wells. So as we have, I wanna make sure, and this is really a question Mr. Miller could provide a better written answer to you at some point, but as developments come in, or as units come in, they pay a water replacement fee, and then we, as a town, get more water, you know, out of the grounds. That's the best answer I could give you, is those two things are kinda unrelated. Twenty years ago, everyone that's been here, or seventeen years ago, I guess we had some pretty severe droughts, and so we had some wells damaged. We're in a different water situation, and it's been, we've had some wet years, too. So whether or not there are homes that are built, won't really affect in a material way whether or not you can wash your car. You're not supposed to be watering your lawn, anyway, but...
Right, understood.
Yeah, that's it. And then, you know, I would say the second question, that's kind of a long-term planning type of thing. We do have a master plan, which, you know, you're free to get a copy of. We can probably get it to you electronically, but we have folks like Councilman Wilder that have been working on that, as well some other of us for, you know, close to two decades. So that's, there's not a long-term plan to turn a town like Manchester into Rockville, if that's what your question is.
That kind of is what it is, yes.
Yeah. I would say the answer to that is no.
Department of Public Works, they did submit official comments, right? Or they not? I thought they did.
What's that? I couldn't hear you.
Department of Public Works. I thought I had written comments.
So that's the other thing, for those folks in the room that are gonna be commenting, we're still in the phase where we're gathering, so we're gathering your comments now. We're gathering comments from the state and county. We have comments from planning and zoning. Do you mean Department of Public Works here internally? Yeah, so we're still gathering comments, and we're not voting tonight. We're just gathering public comments tonight.
Right, understood.
Which we'll also do, you know, we have some written ones, and you're free to come back at any time and talk with us.
Okay.
And those comments come in, they would specifically address water, sewer, things like that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Mr. Lawrence Peach?
Lawrence Peach, twenty-seven eighteen Valley View Court, Manchester. I basically just have the same concerns about infrastructure. Excuse me. As far as what she was saying about water, I know for a fact, we have a well that's not currently even being used, because the county comes out and tests it, showing the corner of my property twice a week. Matter of fact, the geologist told me when they were building Manchester High School, I could go down there and mess with the guys over there at the high school by moving their string up and down. Naturally, I didn't do that, but where I'm at now, we see a lot of problems with traffic already, and no offense to Johns' guys, but I've spoken to some of them before, and they told me that the only ones that are not stopping for the stop signs are the people that live in Manchester Farms. But my wife's a teacher, who's currently been working from home, so in the morning before she starts, she likes to go out for a walk. She's almost been hit several times by the traffic that do not stop the stop signs. They do not pay attention to the lowered speed limits, which was done when they built Manchester Farms. That's all just a waste of time and money putting up those signs. Same way with the parking signs. There's no parking signs all over Manchester Farms, but they still park on the streets. You gotta weave through there to get in and out of the development. So, just some more concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it, appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
I believe it's Scott Fisher.
Hello, my name's Scott Fisher. I live on Charmville Drive. My property actually backs up to the Lippi Farm. So I look at my back door, it's a beautiful farm. I get to see great, you know, beautiful section of Carroll County. I'm born and raised in North Carroll area, went to Hampstead Elementary, went to North Carroll Middle School, I went to North Carroll High School. You know, I had an option or choice growing up, or as I, you know, became an adult, I could move, you know, I could have moved to Hartford County, I could have moved to Howard County. You know, I could have moved to Westminster, where there's a strip mall on every intersection, or in houses on top of each other. I chose to move back to Manchester because of the small town. You know, there's only so much building you would think going on here. There's only so many neighborhood or businesses. It's just, it's never gonna be, at least I hoped, an area like our previous people like Rockville, or an area where you're just, you're on top of each other all the time. It's starting to turn into that, you know, and I'm worried about that. Well, I wanna raise my kids here, I wanna raise my family here. Trying to get out on Route Thirty from Charmville, if you try to make a left to go north during any type of rush hour, you're taking your life in your hands, as it is, just the amount of traffic already here. I'm not, I'm a simple guy. I'm not a, you know, an environmentalist. I'm not a economist, you know. Just looking at all this, it seems like the infrastructure... My wife teaches at Manchester Elementary School. The elementary school's already overcrowded. Main Valley, everyone is about Main Valley being insanely overcrowded. It seems like there's no plan in place, or that things are happening at the wrong time for the wrong reasons, and I just don't know if this is the best option for us right now. Again, my question, or my, I guess my comment is just do the right thing for the right reasons. If, you know, if it works for the town, I guess it's great. I know money talks. So I have nothing against you personally, you know. I've coached your granddaughters in basketball, lacrosse, soccer. There's nothing about that, you know. I'm part of this town, but I wanna see you do the right things for the right reasons.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I apologize. I believe this is the gentleman in the black and red. Yeah, well, you signed it, and so I can't read your signature.
I'm sorry.
You're good. If you don't mind coming up and stating your name and address, just for the record.
Sure.
And I'm gonna write your name on here, so...
Yeah, I'll spell it for you if you'd like.
Okay.
It's Michael Paskewitz, P-A-S-K-E-W-I-T-Z, Z as in zebra.
Okay, thank you.
And I live on, I'm actually right next to Scott, so I back up to the cornfield as well, on Charmville. We just bought the house. We knew when we bought the house that there were plans to do something. We just didn't know when, and that's fine, and we knew that there was a risk in purchasing our property. Just like Scott, born and raised in Carroll County, grew up in Manchester, so I've lived here my whole life. Knew when this was a daycare center. Actually went to daycare pretty much right here. But anyhow, I just think that, like he commented on, all the traffic going through downtown Manchester every single day of the week is crazy. You had an option to build a bypass, or at least I would think there was an option to build a bypass back when Hampstead did. For whatever reason, you didn't, that's okay, and that's fine. But you see the repercussions of not doing that now, and wanting to keep a small-town vibe, is actually causing more traffic and more of a backup in town than I think is necessary, but, you know, we live and learn. I just think, like Scott said, do the right thing for the right reasons. Keep in mind that it's already a crowded area, and it doesn't need to be more crowded in a lot of people's minds. There's a lot of people here that are concerned, and a lot of people in the immediate area that I've talked to that are concerned about this and about how this is going. So, just wanted to say that, so...
Thank you for your comments. We definitely appreciate those. There's definitely some misinformation out there.
Okay.
Not with respect to this proposed annexation, but with the bypass. So if we were given an option, many of us were here, I think, at that time.
I know it was a long time. It was ten years or twelve years ago, or fifteen years ago.
Some of us have been here a long time.
Yeah, I ran on it when it was being built in Hampstead, so...
Yeah, so, yeah, it was not an option for us.
Okay.
The state cut the project in half for a number of reasons.
Did they?
Yeah, well, you know, primarily funding, but I think there's also some logistical problems up here, in terms of the grade.
In a way that things are configured up here, it might be difficult to make that jump across, just because there might not be the property to do it, or you might not have the right property to do it, and I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we certainly don't as a town. That would need to be a very, like a really estate-driven project.
Right.
You're probably talking about a hundred million dollars.
Right.
For a town with a two-point-five million dollar budget, like, it's just not an option. One of the things that we say here, and this is something we discuss all the time, I don't wanna go too far off on a tangent, is that we don't as much have a traffic problem here as we have a through-traffic problem.
Yes.
So we could go down to ten homes in Manchester. It's still gonna be jammed up on Main Street because we can't control anything that goes on the other side of the border.
I think, I guess, where my mind is at with that, I guess I'll conclude with this. I don't wanna eat up too much time. Like Scott said, it's difficult for anybody back in that neighborhood to get access to Route Thirty, to head north towards Hanover, as it is. So as a homeowner in that area, it's gonna be difficult to get access to your main roads that you need to be able to go do things with your family. That's like, I think that's more so what we're talking about than the traffic itself being an issue, and this creating more traffic. It's not, it's about the comfortability, you know, how comfortable are you in your own home, and how comfortable are you able to, you know, leave and go out and go do like a pumpkin patch thing on the weekend with your family and not have to fight to get out on the road and risk getting into an accident and getting T-boned or something, you know. That's, I think that's kinda...
I get you. Three of us up here use Charmville Drive to get on the Thirty, so...
And I used it my whole life from Park Avenue and did that all the way through as a through-driver, and so I'm familiar with it, but, yeah.
Are you gonna keep these?
I just wanted to make sure that, like Scott said, that we're doing the right thing for the right reasons, and we're thinking about the people that are gonna be living in this development, not just the fact that there's gonna be a development there.
Gotcha.
Because each house is gonna bring with it three or four kids, maybe, two kids, I don't know, but there's a lot of kids, a lot of people, a lot of, you know, so, anyway. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Sure. Appreciate your comments, and please come back.
Yeah. I'm not going anywhere. Have a good night.
Thanks. Steve, this jumps from number four to number six, is that correct?
Sorry, I called in the House of Representatives, number five. My problem, the first one, next one up is Virginia Lippi Baron.
Okay. So... Okay. Ms. Lippi Baron, as you're coming up, so I know that the two ladies that came in weren't here when we first started. So I know that you were pre-screened with Mr. Miller out in the hallway. Please come up to the microphone, state your name, address, leave your mask on if you can, so that we don't have to sanitize in between uses. And then, we're asking folks to keep it to about two minutes. If there's a simple question we can answer, we certainly will answer and have some dialogue with you. But, you know, we don't have every answer tonight, and what we're doing is gathering public comment, as we continue to gather comments from, you know, other agencies as well. So with that, ma'am, if you don't mind stating your name and address.
I'm Virginia Lippi Baron. I live at thirty-two twenty-five Beaver Street. I was raised down at the Manchester, where the school is and where the house is, and it's all blocktop. Over on the field that you wanna build homes or anything, it's all blocktop. It doesn't matter where you go, from Route Thirty all the way up the hill, everything is, you dig down, it's nothing but blocktop. Those stones are hard. You can't drill through, you can't do a lot of things. My father and mother, we raised a lot of stuff there. You only could dig so far down, and if you dig so far down, it was nothing but blocktop. So I think that whoever wants to build, they're not going to build, because everything is blocktop. If you don't believe me, go up to Lisa's filling station, used to be, all that field down in Cape Horn, is all blocktop. You can't build nothing on blocktop, period.
Okay.
So I think that whoever wants to build, you can't build on blocktop. Because you can't get out on Route Thirty down there if you, when I lived at there, at the house, you had to wait at least ten minutes years ago to get where you're going. You went down the hill, fine. If you're going up the hill, forget it.
Yeah, it can be difficult. Okay. Was that our timer? Okay. Thank you for your comments, ma'am. I think the other thing I forgot to say to you two is, so we're asking folks, you come in this way, is to leave this way?
Yes, and Mrs. Lippi Baron has a caretaker.
Oh, okay.
A caretaker would like to speak, so I'm gonna let her sit back down.
Perfect.
Can you come with me if you could sit down until Emily's finished?
And Steve, we have enough light out this way for folks to see? Okay. I know it's gotten dark now. So, is it Emily Calt Rider? Okay.
Hi, my name is Emily Calt Rider. I live at twenty-seven oh four Mount Ventus Road. It's in the other direction, but my family is from the town, and we have a local business, the property up the road from the property we're discussing. I don't want to be redundant and continuously talk about the traffic, but that is an important thing between that and just if the town itself can tolerate the extra strain. And as the gentleman that was speaking before when we came in said, you know, it's not just the people that live here now, but the people that could potentially come to live here. There's a lot of things to think about for them as well. So I say, I don't, I don't wanna be redundant and talk about things that other people have already gone over, but there are a lot of different things to think about how this will affect everyone, say, not just the people here, but the people to come, so there's, I say, I don't wanna keep going over the same thing, so I won't do that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I'll wait for Steve to come back in just for a minute. That is all the, all the folks I currently have. Hey, Steve, do we have anybody else from the community? Okay. We did receive a couple of letters that came in. I'm not gonna read through all of them, but they will be entered as part of the record for the public hearing.
I thought we had to.
I thought, yeah.
Oh, we have to read them?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we had to read the...
Do we read these?
No, the reason you were saying that we were completely virtual is that people are just, I don't think you have to read those verbatim. I think the entered in the record is just public.
I'll give a summary. We have one from Mr. George Hutman. He is concerned about traffic. We have one from Mr. Donald Dice Road. It's a pretty lengthy letter. In fact, there's a couple of letters here from Mr. Dice Road, again, but mostly around traffic. We have one submitted by Ms. Lorraine Thomas on Wertz Road. She is not in favor of the town annexing the property, but she did give kudos to our Planning and Zoning Board. She said she dialed in to a number of those meetings, and they did a pretty thorough job, and were very thorough in looking out for the town's interest. So we'll enter the complete copy, and if everybody's okay, we won't read all of them verbally here. Yes? So nothing else has come in during the meeting? Any calls other than the letters that we received during the week or during the past couple of weeks? I don't think so, okay. I haven't heard of any. Okay, so anything else from the public or from the folks that are here? Chairman Paracone, do you wanna speak on the record, or...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I'll say is I think our comments are very clear and concise in our letter to you, as the mayor and council requested. I stand behind what we did in session and in our meetings and our vote, and I think it's very clear which way the Planning and Zoning Council believes on this particular subject. And I'm willing to answer any questions for the council or the mayor at this time while I'm here.
Anybody have any questions? And for the record... And, and for the record, because it's not, it's not a secret meeting at all, we're, we're planning, we're, we're trying to coordinate between now and obviously next month when the scheduled vote is for us to get together with Planning and Zoning. As we're, as comments come back in from the community, from other agencies, we could get to spend more time digesting some of the, the details that your group put together so that we can really ask some more detailed questions. So that, you know, everybody's kind of able to get the, the best firm grounding they can to, to cast their vote.
Very good.
So appreciate you guys working with us on that too, we don't, we don't always do something like that, I know, so.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay. If, uh, if that is it on comments, we'll entertain a motion, close the public hearing, back into the general business meeting.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing and continue to the general business meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, close of the public hearing, thank you everybody for, for working with us on that, I know this is a little non-standard. But it, it is important that, that we get this done and keep everyone safe. First order of business, receipt of July twenty-twenty Treasurers Report.
I'll make a motion that we receive the July twenty-twenty Treasurers Report.
I'll second that.
So motion second, all's in favor, say aye.
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 And you saw, I think you guys probably saw the email earlier, minutes are not ready yet, so we'll have double minutes to, to review next month. Receipt of August twenty-twenty Treasurers Report.
I'll make a motion, we receive the August twenty-twenty Treasurers Report.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and then we have a, a check register for September, we have a motion to receive the check register.
I'll make a motion, we receive the September twenty-twenty check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. All right, mayor's report, couple of comments here, first, congratulations to Steve and Lori Miller on the birth of their first grandchild, Aubrey. Sounds like everything's going well. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a big moment, and then we got another one on the way up, up here. Sorry for making an announcement. I didn't mean to break it to the world.
That's all right.
And it's got all excited about it, so. Yes, that's, that, that's big news here in town, and certainly congratulations to the Millers. Brush pickup on Tuesday, Tuesday, October twentieth is, is a reminder, th- these are things that are four feet in length, not to exceed four inches in diameter. I'm sorry, eight feet in length, place the cut end, you know, towards the curb, help our guys out to stay efficient in getting that stuff. It's one brush pile per property. We have bulk trash coming up, our schedule this year is a little bit off due to COVID, but we do have one coming up on October twenty-first. Please call Hughes so that they know you're going to have something out there, and if there's any special instructions, they'll, they'll give that to you. We've had a couple of wet and windy days here recently, so as everybody knows, it's time to start picking up leaves. That will begin on Monday, so that will be Mondays, we've had brush and yard waste on Fridays. See, when does the, the yard waste on Fridays stop? Okay, so we'll have overlap. So we have overlap of about a month, okay. So the, the leaf pickup, a little bit different than, than the brush. You know, get, get the leaves down to, to the curb, again, we use different equipment to get that up, so if you can get, get that down to the curb, and we use a different truck to pick that stuff up. That'll continue, uh, plan to continue till December seventh. Water bills are due again this month, October thirtieth, not the thirty-first. Halloween, I get a ton of questions about Halloween, as I'm sure the, the rest of you do. It's the same, as far as we're concerned, it's the same rules as always, if you wish to participate, you're welcome to, we'll have the, the police out in the neighborhoods doing everything we can to, to make sure that the neighborhoods are safe. It's really geared six-thirty to eight-thirty, children twelve years old and younger. If you do not wish to participate, of course, this is a different kind of year, please turn your light off. And, and if you do, please, you know, be courteous to other folks, maintain some distance, we recommend that you wear masks and that sort of thing. That's all I have, and I'll turn it over to the town administrator.
Good evening, mayor and council, we'll review the September twenty-twenty administrative report under pending items. Under pending items, opioid litigation, nothing at this time. The athletic field lighting project, that is complete. We're working on coordination between town and the rec council on the operation of the lights. Actually, I turned the key over to the football coordinator today and gave him a quick lesson, and they are good to go on that. The trout unlimited project, that project's moving ahead very well, the split rail fence had been installed at the site and still moving forward with the tree plantings this fall. The Manchester Valley High School electric sign, I've heard nothing from the Board of Education since our virtual meeting last month. Twenty-nine oh six Hanover Pike, staff's been working with our town attorney on this in regards to removing this property from the water and sewer master plant. If you recall, this is a piece of property, it's outside the town limits, but it's in our water and sewer master plant. They want to sell the property, unfortunately, it has a hand dug well on the property and they would like to tie into town water. Which, uh, there is no health problem, similar to the one we had on Walnut Street because of the MTBE issue. So staff and our attorney has been working on this to get back with those homeowners. The personnel policy update as it relates to emergency leave, I put this on hold for a month, of course, due to our agenda tonight. And also, we had some comments from council member Miller last month in regards to the family leave. Our attorney looked into it, and we do want to make some modifications, and I'll be sending that, those modifications out to you folks for your review. So maybe by November, we'll do it as a package, because I know the mayor had sent some comments out today in regards to the emergency leave policy. Under code enforcement, I supplied everyone with the monthly code enforcement status update. Under miscellaneous items, I have a action item, and that's the Main Street tree trimming bid that you have in your packet. Also, between this report and the Public Works Report, I will give you an update on the water wastewater operator positions. We have filled one, Mr. Josh Stuller. Josh sits right on the town and county limits, he's a seven-year Army veteran, has a good mechanical background. He will be starting tomorrow. We have another candidate that is in the process. The process entails drug screening, and he has to call town hall so we can make an appointment for him. Under COVID nineteen and the CARES funding, you have an action item before you. This is for hands-free door openers for town hall, police department, and the bathroom facilities at Christmas Tree Park. And we're continuing developing our COVID nineteen employee guidelines and recommendations. And under CARES funding, staff has spoken to several companies in regards to scanning and cataloging documents, as well as looking at doing it in-house. We are also looking into portable ultraviolet disinfection lights that will disinfect large areas. And hopefully, we can get some additional funding, which may be coming, forthcoming from the county, and all requests have to be made by tomorrow, October fourteenth. Our request went in today, so we're, that is in the process. So under the administrative report, I have two action items. The first action item is the Main Street tree trimming bid.
That's a big difference between Bartlett and the other ones.
That is.
Big, large difference.
So as you can see, I did reach out, first of all, I want to thank our park supervisor, Dave Brown, for soliciting the bids from these companies. As you can see, the upper three companies, we're looking at about two hundred dollars a tree, where the one for six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, it equals out to about sixty dollars a tree. I contact the company, the person from Bartlett Tree, and they do stand behind their bid. And I asked, will we see a difference once these trees are trimmed? And he said, yes, you will. Bartlett has done work in the past for us. I can't say that we were happy with, not the last time they were trimmed, but the next to the last time. But he assured me that we will see a difference when they come in and trim the trees. So it's basically staff recommendation to go with Bartlett Tree Service for six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. We had twenty thousand dollars budgeted for that project.
The only question I have is if, if we're not happy with it, are they going to come back and correct it?
I'm sure they will.
Okay.
The reason why, they want our business back.
Okay.
So.
That is a good, good question, because obviously, we don't always have to pick a low bid.
We do not.
Best, best quality, best service, best.
Correct, we do not.
Best value, but boy, yes. I sure hope we don't have to go back again and again.
You're absolutely right about that, and I did take that into consideration.
What's an action item, do we have, you guys want to go ahead and handle those now?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to go with the staff recommendation to award the contract to Bartlett Tree Experts for the trimming of the one hundred and three trees along Main Street in the amount of six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any other discussion? Any others in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, okay.
Okay, our second action item has to deal with the CARES Funding Act. And this would include hands-free door openers for town hall, the police department, and the bathrooms at Christmas Tree Park. I solicited two companies. This is both companies bid on using a new technology, which is called the swipe technology, which you swipe your hand in front of a sensor and the door opens up. We will be doing the front public access door at town hall. We will be doing the front, the side door that faces Victory Street into the police department. And we will be doing the door back here entering into the town hall, meeting hall. We will also be doing the male and female bathrooms at Christmas Tree Park. I solicited two bids, Dormacoba came in at twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, and WFX come in at forty thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. This does include an add-in price for a licensed electrician to run the electric to the controllers and low voltage wires to the swipe controller. They do not, neither one of the companies does any electrical work, so that price is included in this price. So this is the total price. We have worked with WFX in the past, I think their problem is they're busy, real busy. Dormco, Dormacoba can get this completed with, by the end of the year, when the CARES funding has to be spent by. So it's staff recommendation to go with Dormacoba for twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars.
So once again, I assume you spoke, and obviously, it is the exact same thing, because it is a big price difference.
That is correct.
Sounds like maybe WFX cannot get it done in time, and they're making high bids, so if you take it, then yeah, they'll squeeze you in.
Correct.
We have the money for the electrical work?
Yes, we do.
Does that come out of this CARES Act also?
That is correct, it will come out of the CARES funding. Right now, we are probably close to yeah, one oh four in our CARES funding. And we received one eighteen, correct.
That's on the first round.
That's the first round, that is correct.
Are, are these sensors on both sides?
Yes, as you come in and as you leave, yes.
All right, I have probably a silly question, but they're electric. Will they still, will you still be able to work the doors, they're not going to lock if the power goes out or something?
The generator will take care of that.
Even at the park?
Not at the park, they will, they will manually open up.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not going to get somebody stuck.
Yes, they will release themselves.
The, the backup is manual?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it'll revert back to the lock will open itself up.
Okay, perfect.
All right, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept Dormacoba's bid in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-two cents for the hands-free door openers.
Second the motion.
Motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right.
Okay, any questions for me on the admin portion?
Just one, and I, I apologize for sounding like a broken record, but I really would like for the town to engage in discussions with the rec council, rec council on their, some kind of contribution toward the cost of those lights. You know, they get a, they have a privilege down there and
Yeah, I think.
Basically have exclusive rights essentially, so I would like to.
Yeah, that, that's not dead at all. So I mentioned before, they're, they're not back to meeting really in person yet either, they're a little a, and they have new leadership, but they, they have, they have good new leadership over there. Deb and I had a, a good conversation about maybe coming up with some concrete things that they can commit to doing, or, or we're doing together, including a punch out, so rather than just saying like, hey, you know, maybe it's not all monetary, but it's, here's the things that we need to get done up there. And, you know, we, we can work together, maybe it's two years, we replace another, you know, fence and we work together through POS. In the meantime, here is boom, 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 these things have to get done, so may, maybe part of it's in kind and part of it's monetary, part of it's them spending money on to, to fix something like the siding back here. So I think it's, it's a little bit broader conversation than just like, hey, you know, write a check one time or, or five times, something like that, so.
Could we have a Zoom meeting so this doesn't fall by the wayside, I feel like we've been talking about this for like a year.
It, 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 it's going to be a long conversation.
I understand, I'm just asking, because it feels like we've been discussing this since we started with the light.
It's, it's because of the change of leadership, that stuff have gone by, I went there last week and saw, took some pictures, saw how bad it was, passed it on to the mayor. I went there at like one o'clock on a Sunday, by three o'clock, the stuff was done, it's, stuff was trimmed. And we had a discussion about the missing siding and, and things like that, so the mayor and I want to follow up with the, the new president of the, of there. So that's why it's been passed down, and football blames it on basketball, baseball blames it on football, so.
I think it's a concern though for some of us that I understand their leadership changes, as most organizations do. We just don't want to get to the point where we're at the round for another set of new leadership.
Exactly.
Where we're constantly behind the eight ball.
Yep, I, I don't think that's, I mean, we, we had some preliminary discussions, COVID hit, they changed leadership. They're, the new, new folks are getting settled. My opinion is to drag the new people into a meeting where a bunch of us just tell them our concerns probably isn't the most effective way to, to get them to the table, so to speak, I mean, that figuratively, very figuratively, yeah, so. The, the, the conversation's going forward, I think is, is the best way to say it. And, and there's some good folks over there, I think Deb had a good interaction.
Justin.
Yeah.
And then I know Andy Kyle.
And, and Andy Kyle is the new president. So they, they have a lot going on in their world too, you know, they get, they're scrambling for facilities and trying to figure out, trying to keep everyone safe.
Yeah, but they have, they, I mean, it, it's good, okay, there's not many other municipalities that, that has the lights, it's either the J.C.'s or the Lions and.
But maybe it's something we could look at scheduling at the end of their season, I realize their season probably got pushed back some, but maybe it's something we could start talking to them more so seriously about.
They need to tighten things up, quite frankly.
My, my feeling is that a couple of us go, when they start having in-person meetings, a couple of us go to their meeting. They're, they, they have a whole nother set of issues, because they, they're, they're looking for long-term stability, and that's something that we can now provide. They, they're all likely, they're going to lose a lot of the North Carroll High School fields. So there's, there's some other things in play, and I don't want to speak for them, but.
I'd, I'd be willing to consider other type of in-con contributions, but fact is, from the moment all the sports start until they end, town residents don't get used to our fields. No other small community group in Manchester would be able to use those fields from the beginning to the end of that, their sport seasons, and I just want to make sure, if, if they're going to have that privilege, then.
And we have talked about in the past, firming up their contractor, re-looking at it, that kind of thing, because I know that there was one written many, many years ago.
Yeah, we're, we're, that's another thing Ryan and I are going to do, is look at the Member of Understanding and see if we can update that and hold them more accountable for things.
Yeah, that, it's.
Because it's outdated.
I think the only thing we did was, was to add an understanding that includes that Charmill Southwestern Field.
I'll take a look at it and we'll.
Yeah. So yeah, I, I think those things, when I say in kind, I, I don't mean just mowing the grass, I mean, they would cost money for those folks as well. But I think if we can work on things together, there's certain years and time periods where we have access to grants like we did up here. And then other times, they may have access to, to, to get something done, to improve part of the facilities over here.
So are they aware that we are going to have a discussion with them about that? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Steve.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk to you guys offline about it too, and answer, like, kind of like, you know, where we are.
While we're on this, I know you had reached out to them in regards to posting signs about social distancing and things at the. While we're on this, I know you had reached out to them in regards to posting signs about social distancing and things at the fields. Have, have we seen any progress on that?
Haven't seen any signs back there, none. I've been back here, Kelly and I have both been back here numerous times, and we have seen nothing.
I didn't see any either, I was there this weekend and the pre-weekend before, I didn't see anything.
I haven't noticed any at the Charmel lot, I, it might have been that I just drove past them.
No, I looked too, there's nothing there, unless they put something up in the last couple of days.
Uh, what we can do is, uh, I can reach out to Mr. Otto and, uh, pass that on to him about signage. So, I did that back when it was brought to my attention, probably a month ago, I guess.
Did you say, it's been, I know you said something a while ago about.
Yeah, nothing.
I, I did get some feedback from, um, and I think, they, they, I think would be willing, I haven't talked to Justin in a week or so, or at least a couple of days, but, um, I think they'd be willing to get, like, sort of a next-day sign kind of thing, um, which i- isn't a huge monetary thing, and get those things out there, and then they last so long, and you got to replace them if the wind gets them or something.
I, I totally understand that, but if Steve's already talked to them, that's what we were trying to say, like, why, we shouldn't have to give them a second call and a third call, this should be done, or, or we can do it and they can pay the bill. I mean, it's getting a little bit, they don't have enough time, the staff is already so overwhelmed to have to go back, and then you have to make a phone call, or Debbie has to make a phone call, we shouldn't have to do that when they're using the fields, and basically, we're maintaining them. So, something has to be, I think we have to have a little more stringent.
To be clear, most of, they're maintaining most of them.
They maintain it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, okay, for example, the lights, et cetera, but my point is, I think we have to have a little bit more of a stringent, the, the, could you, would you please, doesn't really work, especially now with the situation where with COVID and things like that.
All right.
Well, there was no social distancing.
That's what I'm saying, I get, I get the sports.
None whatsoever, at that football game.
I get the sports and all that, but the, the, the people that are there watching and things like that, there should be something, I mean, I rode by there, one of the.
Volunteering to manage that process, is that what you're doing?
If you want me to, I will.
I don't want you to.
Okay, just asking. I'm more than happy to, when I rode by there the other day, I mean, there was people piled.
Yes.
I mean, piles of people.
Yes.
And I get it's their own problem, but it's going to end up hurting everyone, because the kids aren't going to be able to play, and some other things are going to happen if it continues like that.
And the only people that had masks on were the coaches.
Right, I know, yeah.
I think they have rules about it, I, I don't. All right.
All right, well.
Um, Steve, you, you have more to do?
I have Public Works.
Okay, you want to run through that?
Sure. Um, you have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater data report for September. One thing I want you to look at that I just spotted, and believe me, I didn't have a chance to review this, but on page two, one big indicator is the spring overflow rate, and to tell you the truth, I mean, I was very happy to see the rain we received over the last couple of days. Things were getting very dry, that was always an indicator that things were really looking bad. Uh, I have to take a hard look at this tomorrow, I just received it today, and I want to look at our wells and make sure that some of our wells are not being stressed out. I'm also concerned about the three hundred and ten thousand gallons, uh, that we pumped for September. That number should start dropping, uh, we're out of the time period when people are filling their pools, and I have to check with, uh, the director on that. Uh, I talked a little bit about the two open positions, our interview staff, uh, and, and Mrs. Howe attended those interviews, uh, for the two positions. Of course, one is filled, and, uh, one is being worked on. Underwater, the Park Avenue Tank Rehabilitation, uh, the bid doc, documents are complete. They're out for bids and they're due back November twentieth, uh, this will be a spring twenty twenty-one project. The Park Ridge Well Pump A had to be replaced, we used an outside contractor. The Dell Well Emergency Generator Replacement, uh, that project is to be one hundred percent complete by mid-November. The outside contractor is Eastern Sales and Engineering. Under wastewater, the wastewater treatment plant E and R upgrade and optional, uh, expansion, uh, Phase One, the testing and evaluation continues. There was a virtual stakeholders meeting on nine twenty-two with all the parties involved, MDE, the town, the, uh, engineering firm. Uh, also, the ultraviolet disinfection system that we voted on a few months ago was sent out to Canada, as you recall. That is currently completed and being shipped back to Maryland. Under parks, maintenance, roads, and stormwater management facilities, uh, the street and, and, uh, the street and asphalt rehabilitation projects began late September. Apparently, the contractor had to vacate temporarily and will be back on the job on October nineteenth. Uh, the crossroads overlook sign, our maintenance folks took care of that, cleaned it up, it's looking real good. And the post office fence replacement was taking care of that old rotten stick fences to take down. We put a new vinyl, white vinyl, and, uh, our maintenance, our facilities maintenance person, Randy Berry, did an excellent job on that and some of our other folks, so I appreciate that.
Looks good, I was there today.
Uh, so that's all I have for Public Works.
Steve, on this, um, three hundred and ten thousand gallon pump, which is going to be three hundred and nine dollars, three hundred and eleven, a- any idea why for September it would be that high?
Could be a leak out there, we did have a water main break on Rochelle Court last Wednesday or Thursday. Uh, it could be something going on with the system, uh, maybe we're out, maybe we have a leak out there. That number should be down around, in my opinion, it should be down around two eighty, and I actually based that on some of the sewer flows, and you can see the sewer flows are down. The average gallons of water treated per day was two forty-three, so, two hundred and forty-three thousand a day. So I have to do some investigating, we have a staff meeting first thing tomorrow.
Pump it, is that a greater variance than we normally see?
Yeah, you have to remember that we, uh, have more water customers and we do have sewer customers, so you'll see a little bit of deviation there, but, you know, we're only treating two hundred and forty-three thousand gallons, and we're pumping three hundred and ten thousand, so something's not right, something's going on.
And that, and that should be a fairly like, and I know those won't be parallel lines, but.
Yeah, those are, yeah, that, that three-ten and the three-nineteen, that's what you basically see in maybe a July or August, when things are real hot and you're filling pools. That number should steadily start dropping, once we get into the fall months. People are done, they, they, they fill their pools, they sneak water on us, we know that. The pool's closed over here, they have a severe leak over there, we know, you know, they had, they were filling the pool, of course, it's a public pool, they can do that.
Yeah.
But that number should be down a little bit lower than that.
Is that number possibly high because of the number of people that are still working from home and not, like, that are not back at school, they're?
Yeah, we could take that into consideration, then again, we have to revert back to the sewer numbers, so they, they should be up.
Okay.
They should be up also.
You would think so, but.
Yeah, it, I mean, yeah, it's possible, you know. And then again, if, then again, if you want to get into a little bit deeper, you got to remember that all the schools are closed. So that would increase that number even more than three hundred and ten thousand gallons a day.
So, all the folks that live around that come in.
Yep, yep, so, I mean, we increase our population by about twenty-eight hundred every day, with all the schools in session.
Yeah.
So, but, I'll do some checking on that, we have a staff meeting tomorrow, so I'll find out what's going on with that. But that, on page two of that, that's a very good indicator, like I said, I was getting a little concerned, um.
How much rain did we get?
Uh, actually, oh, I don't know, uh, I don't know over the la, over the last several days, but when you're only showing the precip of two inches over the whole month of September, yeah, that's not, yeah. But, anyway, I'll do some look, looking.
Do we have no, no action items on?
Uh, no, no action items on Public Works.
Anything else for the town administrator? Nope, nothing here. All right, um, please support Chief.
Short and sweet, the way I like it, uh, for the month of September, we handled one hundred and thirty-two calls for service. We're still starting to, we're continuing to handle calls outside of town. A lot of the sheriffs have been on the southern end of town, so we're picking up the flow on the northern end of town, along with Hampstead. Uh, we investigated two domestics, crimes been, knock on wood, very low, we had no Part One crime, uh, so that's a good thing. Everything continues to be minor in nature for the most part. Neighbor complaints, there's been some crisis interventions, things like that. Uh, traffic, as we heard tonight, is a big problem. The guys feel like they're yo-yos, they hit one end of town, they go to the other end of town, when they go to the other end of town, you know, the, the, it just goes back and forth, back and forth. Uh, stop signs are a big problem, and I got to tell you, I don't know who said it tonight, a lot of times, it's, it's our residents. It's within the neighborhoods, I mean, I've seen it myself, they're just blowing through the stop sign. I can't blame it on Pennsylvania, the traffic's been low, a lot of them not, they're not even using it as a bypass anymore, because we haven't had bus traffic, so a lot of them have been staying on thirty. It's our residents that are the biggest part of the problem. Uh, we did issue one hundred and twenty-eight, uh, warnings and citations, uh, one arrest, all due to traffic. Uh, overdoses, the numbers are still kind of staying in comparison to next year, there have been decreases, but I got to be frank, unless you see a substantial decrease, a two percent or a three percent is meaningless to me. Uh, there's been three hundred and twelve overdoses countywide, a hundred and thirty-three of them have been heroin and fentanyl related. Uh, we've had thirty-four fatalities countywide, uh, unfortunately, we picked up our first overdose just a couple of days ago, and it was a fatality from Crown Circle, a young lady up there. Uh, Hampstead, uh, has had thirteen, we were at zero until the latest overdose. Sykesville's at four, Tawnytown's at twenty-three, Westminster's at a hundred and fifteen, and Mount Aries, uh, at eight. So that's still continuing to be a problem. Uh, Mayor, like you said, we're ready for Halloween, we'll, we'll be out there, all the men and women, well, not men and women, all the guys will be out there. The fire department's going to assist us, I think they're going to pick one or two corners, they're going to light up the rigs, hand out, hand out candy. So we'll be there for the community, and, uh, I know there's been a lot of questions, so maybe it's something we could put out on Facebook, because people are wondering, you know, what the rules are, I know we said it tonight, but sometimes Facebook gets it out a little bit more.
It is, yeah, it is.
Uh, the elementary school, I think they're going to do their trunk and tree at the North Carroll this year. I'm not sure about Guy Gary and, uh, with that parade, I haven't heard anything about that from mamas. So we're just going to, we're going to prepare for Halloween night, and that's about it.
I got a, um, a couple of questions, so there was a newspaper article, if it was last week or the week before, about the increase in September in heroin overdoses, I don't know that fatalities necessarily were increased as much, as just the overdoses. Do we see the, a corresponding increase here, or is, or is that more centralized into, it was, you know, some, some, something that hit the street someplace, and that was kind of focused in, in a couple of areas, do you, do you know?
I, I mean, normally, that's what happens, they'll put out their testers, and they'll make their testers hot, they'll add fentanyl, because they're trying to get better sales, and when that happens, you'll get your overdoses. Like, I believe there were some back-to-back overdoses in Hampstead, Westminster gets hammered frequently. Fortunately, we've, we've been pretty good, I don't, it's, we've been actually really good, as far as Manchester goes.
Um, the, the risk of getting, all, all this, this is not really too off-topic, I guess, now that more of us are working at home, and I don't know that, maybe Vince, maybe Deb also live on, on a route, I don't know if something like, like a Waze is causing more trucks that wouldn't naturally be going through the town streets to navigate through it at difficult times, and these wouldn't, I, I, it's not like a, a, you know, you expect a furniture delivery or a pool water in the spring, um, and those sort of things. The, the, these are more like what you would see on the highways, I've just started noticing coming through neighborhoods, and I'm wondering if something like a Waze is navigating them, um.
There hasn't been any additional truck traffic in my neighborhood.
I haven't seen it, my neighborhood.
Not tractor-trailers, if that's what you're talking about.
I see tractor-trailers coming through.
Not on Michelle, no.
Yeah, um.
What, it's your neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
They're not coming up to our end.
See, I don't think, I don't think they would.
I have seen some moving trucks and stuff coming through recently, because there's been something.
Moving trucks is different, I'm talking tractor-trailers, I think they're getting off on Twenty-seven and coming up Albert Real, and then coming through and going out Charmel.
That's pretty wild.
I don't know.
Yeah.
We've had one or two back in our neighborhood, but guilty for one, there was a girl that was delivered and one was, but not.
Par for the course.
We haven't seen anything, I haven't, yeah, but nothing, yeah.
No, this would be like, uh, I'm not, name is for their company, but you know, like, like a Yellow or Schneider.
No, no.
You know, and, and I would only think like Waze, they're putting it in and saying, hey, avoid downtown, so now they're starting to hit. So I was wondering if you guys saw it on your side.
Not at all.
It's kind of like the same thing they're doing on the eastern shore, when they're traveling like to the beach and stuff, they're going through all the neighborhoods, because they're following Waze, instead of staying right on Route fifty, and the people are so upset.
So if we see that as something that continues, we, we may want to look at signage, um, yeah, to, to, to curb some of that. Um, one of my thoughts, I, I've had an uptick, I think that you guys did as, as well, because I know, I didn't get back to one guy fast enough, and he sends it in here, and then you sent it back to me. Um, I've had an uptick in people complaining about traffic again, um, speeding, asking for speed humps, asking for stop signs, like those sort of things. Um, and I've, I've talked amongst, and, and I know everybody here is aware of it, and, and we've had the same conversations, um, a lot of times, but, you, you know, the, the time may come, well, one, um, someone, I'll talk to some of you guys about, but I'm grateful that that's the big complaint, it doesn't mean that it's great, that it is a complaint, and it doesn't mean that it's not an issue and we can't be better. But it, it, you know, it is nice to live in a place where the, the biggest fear, you know, is, is traffic. That being said, we still do need to continue to, to improve, so we, we've tried a lot of things, and I know Chief's been over a couple of times, past six to nine months, um, kind of going into COVID where we had to back off a little bit, but we really tripled the amount of tickets, and it seemed like it just didn't do anything, and through no fault of our own.
It seems like a lot of the complaints that I've been hearing from people, yes, it's the speeding, but a lot of them are the, I'm going to say the older neighborhoods, where they're not used to all the traffic, and they're getting a lot more traffic from the developments and things like that, and I think it's just hard for them to deal with, you know what I mean, they're not used to people traveling through there, so, instead of having three cars that used to travel through an hour, now they have twenty, and they notice everything with the traffic, per se.
You would think you would hear more from Charmel, I don't know that we do.
We hear more about Manchester Farms than we do Charmel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Coming out of, you know, that Arizona Way area and, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I wonder who that could be.
And all the stop signs that they're not even slowing down for.
I see that in our neighborhood too, let me ask you a question, I hate to mention this, because I swore I'd never see them in Manchester, but how do you feel about traffic cameras? So that you're not, you guys aren't running from one end of town to the other.
That also goes to the state too, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, I mean, speaking frankly on it, do they make a difference? Sure. I've been busted by them, when I go to, go that way a second time, I slow down, but, uh.
Good figure.
I, I, I don't like the revenue, the quota that they create.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that's, that's always been my issue, because I know how it works, that the company gets half, and, you know, it just.
And if you dip below the number, then you get a fee, and it's not fair to.
Yeah, then you owe them money.
Is there anything else that, that's out there that is a portable thing, or something we can buy, and it's not, but are all the cameras like that? So you have to do quotas and all this other stuff?
I would think so, yeah, because we don't have the capabilities to maintain the ticket system and collecting the fees.
Yeah.
And we have a tough time with our own parking fees, it's, it's not easy.
Okay, I was just asking.
Yeah.
I, I mean, my, my recommendation would be, um.
Shoot their tires out.
No.
Oh, my goodness.
No, i- is that.
Forgot where I was.
Is that thi- this, this group, along with the chief, and, and, and the chief would kind of, will be on the cutting edge of, you know, as things come out, and as things become options for us, because technology will continue to evolve, continue to get cheaper, is that we should be open to what else can we do, because, um, putting obstacles at one or two, or, or ten places in town, we, we did that years ago, it didn't work, everyone just slams on the brake of that obstacle, and then slams on the gas on the other side of it. If we have hard-placed speed ticket cameras, like, like they have, it's like going into Damascus, you know, you're fifty miles an hour, you slam on the brakes, you go twenty-five on the side of it, and it really just goes again. So I don't know that that adds to the overall town safety to put a few hard obstacles around, it only slows people down at that one spot. Um, one of the questions I asked Chief was, you know, like, this thing that we have up here, is we all drive up to Victory Street. They're, they're fairly portable, they're, they're not terribly expensive, does it make sense to get some of these around with, with, uh, even some sort of plan to, to move them, like we used to do with the speed trailer, but that's, these are a whole lot easier. You know, because I think most people still want to be a good citizen, they're just not thinking.
But do they make a difference?
Yeah, I think so, I do too, yeah, I do, I do. It's still on Mindy, yep.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I feel.
Yep.
And some of the residents that would come in and.
Some of the residents that would come in and voice their concerns, I've seen watch the sign as cars drive past. So it's, I don't know if it's reinforcing that the some, that, I mean, but many people aren't speeding or what, or if they're just being more mindful because it's there, and maybe they're not sure if it's recording or not.
Yeah, it's, it's something we have to deal with.
It does, it, it does.
Yeah, it lights up red.
He turns red if he could.
Because it's double, it's like double-tagged the car behind me one time.
And that's a problem.
Yeah, it had me doing sixty at one time, because the car behind me, it was hitting off the two, there, there's no way I was going sixty.
Yeah.
And eventually, those things will have cameras, we'll have to keep an eye on what the laws say, and you know, what, you know, it. We'll have to keep an eye on what the laws say, and, you know, what, you know, does that become public information, and get people to request it and then harass speeders, and so there's a whole lot of issues, but, I mean, maybe the next step is we just get some more of those things and just get them out there.
Yeah.
As we continue to evaluate what the options are.
Especially at Manchester Farms.
So, anyway, I, I'm not saying I have all the answers there, I just know that, I know that speed bumps aren't going to work, and we have to keep up with traffic enforcement, but we're not going to be able to warning and ticket our way into everybody behaving well all the time.
It never works. It's, it's a chronic problem that we're going to face forever.
Always has been, and it's the people in the neighborhood, they live there, so...
Like, I, I know I sit on my deck and I'll see folks run the stop sign, and then they make that right on Southwest, we head back, so you know they live here. But it's probably the same thing in your neighborhood, you have those three-way stops.
It is, I see people just going through...
I see, I can sit on my portion, traffic's coming east or west on Michelle Road, and at Augusta, they'll blow it, and the next street, they'll blow it, yep. And sometimes they're just hauling, they're not, because especially right down the street from me, it's just a three-way, so they just roll right through it.
So that's all I had, I know I, I kind of got off on a tangent, but I thought I'd bring it up, because I have been kind of hit lately with, you know, folks saying, maybe we got to do something about this.
It's never going to stop.
Anything else for the chief?
Nope.
All right, I lost my agenda here. I'm assuming nothing else came in, or we're not aware of anything coming in?
I just tried to work. She asked, she asked some public area to...
Who's that?
Why?
Oh, yeah. All right, we'll move on with committee reports, then, Councilwoman Smith.
So, at the meeting, they, you know, just approved the regular minutes at everything they do, but Comcast wanted us to let everyone know, on September twenty-ninth, which you may already know by now, Revolt HD, it's a channel that's on basic cable, and it's going to be an American music-oriented channel. On October twenty-seventh, there's going to be one called Aspire HD. It is a minority-owned network celebr, celebrating the lifestyles of the urban lifestyle and culture, so if anybody's interested in that, it comes with your basic cable, and that was really all they gave us at this time.
Okay. Councilwoman Miller.
All right, in regards to Banner City, we had two people that attended the Fall Conference, so we're on a roll with that. It was last week virtual, I believe Thursday and Friday, so we're okay with that. And I've been in communication with Kelly in regards to the town tree, whether or not we have the town open house, we talked about still doing the tree in front of the Old Town Hall, and I'm going to reach out to the elementary school with the school system transitioning back to hybrid. There's going to be a lot on the plates of the teachers and things, so we talked about possibly opening it up to more than just the Manchester Elementary School students and maybe putting it out on social media, providing it like a drop location to encourage more people to participate in making decorations, and letting them know that we will handle decorating the tree because of the restrictions that are in place, if they're still willing to help with that, so...
All right, Councilwoman Pacelli?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, Councilwoman Howell?
Nothing to report, we have not had anything.
Councilwoman Waller?
All right, yes, we did hold our regular planning and zoning commission meeting last month, there were two items that were noteworthy. One was Equine Meadows, did seek preliminary approval. We granted them preliminary approval with a couple, with a few conditions, one being that we wanted to consider options for a sidewalk on High Street, and there needs to be more discussion on who will care for the stormwater management, whether it's an HOA, that hasn't been decided, things like that. We did review the small cell tower wireless facilities ordinance, and we are approving that for recommendation to the mayor and council, with, again, some changes, which you'll see when it comes to you guys in writing.
Were you guys able to move that, that pond away from Park Avenue, it's still pretty much the same location?
For Equine Meadows?
Yeah.
The stormwater management is still in that same general area?
Yeah, I don't, it'd be tough to move it anywhere else, anyway.
They said, with the way the water flows, there's really nowhere else to put something like that. And that's one of my biggest concerns, is what that's going to look like, because I said, I've never seen a pretty stormwater management pond, and it's going to be right there on, on Park Avenue.
We got them on thirty, too. One suggestion, as you move forward with who's caring for it, and we dealt with this, this is something when I was part of planning and zoning, we didn't, I guess, define as much, is define maintenance and care, so I think what we want, I think, is them cutting the grass and being responsible for cutting the grass, but not necessarily if something bad were to happen, like Steve and I talked about, like, this thing needs a hundred thousand dollar project, because standards change or something breaks, because we don't, one, it probably isn't equitable to have a neighborhood take care of that, and two, then you wouldn't want them going in and, and trying to find, you know, somebody that just knows someone knows how to run a Bobcat, trying to go in and fix this thing. So I think if we can get them mowing, at least, that's my opinion, is to at least define what, what we mean by maintenance and, and caring for.
Well, I think one thing, for Equine Meadows, you get to the question about reference to a hundred... Because if you look at our annual budget, and what we spend on some contracts, maybe a stormwater anger call, it's probably just half the total damage caused in the past, and it's not true to be less, I mean, we spend a lot of money, you know, in the mortgage, you know, and that was one of the things that did bring the attention about having a hundred and thirty, because they're... I recall, in the case of the...
We don't have a homeowners association. We don't, Whispering Valley doesn't have a homeowners, no, they, everybody was against it for forty years ago.
Yeah. It, it, it does, we can't... Where's the microphones sitting next to me? Where's the one that you guys are using? Is, is it... Is yours off? We can't force a new development into an HOA, though, for that reason, can we?
That's pretty much the reason why some of them have them, Park Avenue.
Yeah.
But in addition to storm management, just a particular development, there's a lot of sidewalks, that is not, that is long Park Avenue and, but it's still, next to Chicago.
All right, obviously, Trent's not here today. Does anybody have anything else? Otherwise, we...
I, I have early, there's two of them.
Okay.
I need to recall, P and Z meeting, which is, that's where we're involved, we're certainly at, in the central...
Did I, did I hear correctly that we are not having a P and Z meeting next week? Could we possibly use that Tuesday night for the work session? If it's possible?
I'm...
Would that be in...
The twentieth?
In person or a Zoom?
We, the last one, we were setting up for in-person, right? Or if you can't make it, we can...
Patch you in. It may, I think it makes sense for most people to be able to get together.
Mm-hmm.
I think if anybody felt uncomfortable from any of the groups, I'm also tentative, I'm trying to nail down a couple of days where I have, I won't be here, but I don't have confirmation on those days yet.
Would you like to push it farther into the, the month of October, or...
I mean, I think everybody heard a lot of good feedback this evening from the community. This would give the mayor and council the opportunity here firsthand what, now, they, you put it in writing, so you have a lot of the comments, you have all the minutes, you have everything, it came from planning and zoning, but it's just a good opportunity, and we could add in...
Do we have all the comments from the county at this point?
Yeah.
Today's the thirteenth, I'm more than likely available on the twentieth, everybody else is.
Would it be easier if that was a Zoom versus in-person?
We want to do Zoom.
Well, I think we have a couple of things we're trying to do, right? We want to get together with planning and zoning, be able to ask some questions. I do think it also makes sense for us to get together, we could probably do that as a Zoom, because it's, it's a smaller group, and I think it's a shorter meeting, where we just want to talk about this personnel policy thing, and just hash out what's, what's leave, and what's comp time, and what's, and, and what, what do we want to accomplish, and how are we going to do it? And then we can give Tom the direction to actually write it up, and then go on, it'll be done.
But if I'm understanding Steve correctly, planning and zoning would be next week, so that committee would be planning on meeting.
Ordinarily.
Yes.
Typically, so it's, they're more likely to be available.
Okay, so you want to, oh, I'm sorry.
If that's what they want, if that's what you want to do, I mean, you should let them know right away, because they, right now, think they don't have anything. Okay? Well, can we let, see what they let them know, it's in the...
Correct. Yeah, we'll take care of that first thing and get their...
So the, the plan would be to have it here, and then if somebody has to zoom in, they can?
Well, usu, usually they start at seven, it works out very well, so...
Seven works everywhere.
Are we able to do, just one of the things we're talking about where I work, is this combination Zoom and meet, like, how would we, how would we all be here, and then some people be in their homes, and us see them, them see us, or them, we not, maybe see them, we just hear them, but...
Yeah, that, um...
How many can we all be here? Can?
It's the same size as this group, basically.
You could almost sit them out there like that.
Yeah, we could sit like this, but wouldn't we also have to be open?
Yeah, when, I was thinking about doing the work session, I was going to have council in this part, and things would be set up back through, and that's where the planning and group would set, staff would set, or, 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 and, 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 we'd, you know, the meetings, and, 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 we'd be able to keep them off the street.
So we have to be prepared for that, so...
Why don't we do this, why don't we plan for it? If all of a sudden four of those guys have to be here, it's a no-go, anyway.
Gotcha.
If one person can't be here, then we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Or we'll go old-school and dial them in their cellphone and drop it down on the table.
Again, all the information was provided in writing, it's just it's a lot of stuff to go through versus kind of open dialogue.
I have one other question for you. If we plan that, do they, do they, does anybody have a problem with a seven o'clock versus seven-thirty?
No.
Seven. I think they said seven.
Oh, did they?
They're good with seven, yeah.
This would be on Tuesday?
Yes, next Tuesday, yes.
One week from today.
Real quick, my second item is, I inadvertently forgot this, I want to congratulate Clay Black on his retirement. Clay's leaving the county, he's already left, he's gone, been gone for a week and a half now, thirty-seven years' service with Carroll County, so he's gone, so that's all to Clay.